Mr. Yan.
Here.
Mayor Francis.
Here. Please join me in the flag salute. We have a flag, Ron. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Thanks. There are no proclamations. I'll do committee reports. Start with you, Dawn.
Okay, everything is going very well here, Mike. We are actually at this moment awaiting a freezer. That was very graciously donated by resident of our town. And we have two distributors in the queue to start donating chicken and meats to us. So we can start getting some protein out to the families that still cannot shop. But everything is going smoothly, the whole process. And it's a privilege to be able to help and just ease the burden a little bit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Brad?
Just follow up, Dawn. Thanks. You're doing a great job over there. Just want to know you have our support on that. Just for, just to go over the COVID virus thing real quick. We're, as of noon yesterday, there's 904 cases in the county. There's 94 cases confirmed in Hopecon. And just want to remind everybody still continue with the safe practices and do whatever they can to be safe and not come down with this disease. Going on to other matters today for the council. On the agenda will be a resolution that will put in place a decree that came about from the governor stating that the, both the sewer water and property taxes will be delayed or can have a paid, be able to be paid 30 days later. And that will be in that resolution. And as long as you make your payment by May 31st, there'll be no interest charges. So I fully support that for the hardships of everybody, what they're going through. That'd be on the, that's on the agenda. The other thing is because of the hardships and the financial conditions, we on the finance committee are looking at furtals unfortunately here in the, in the town. So I know Ryan's gonna make a few comments on that later. But we want to be, we don't want to be silly with this, knowing what could happen going forward. And that's all I got, Mayor.
Rich?
I just want to concur with Bradley, with the finance committee. You know, we are trying to keep our fingers on the pulse with the town and its finances. Obviously, this is all new territory for us. And I also concur that with the extension of the grace period for the tax water and sewer bills. The governor was gracious enough to give us that power over the last two days. Next, I want to just send out a thank you to our EMS, our fire departments and our police force for being on the front line of this battle with the COVID-19. I'd like to also thank the nurses and doctors in our town for helping our neighbors with dealing with the COVID-19 when they're in the hospital or even just around. Also, again, please go and patronize our local businesses. They are open, the ones that are. I don't have a list in front of me, but they are open for takeout, especially the restaurants. They really need our help. And I would like to thank Dawn and her staff for all the hard work that she's doing over at the community center, really helping out getting food to local families and people that need it. I also want to do a shout out to Alex McLean, the Hopecon Board of Education president. He has set up a food drive for the students and also families in our town too. And that's it.
Thank you. John?
I do not have a lot. First of all, if I would like to ditto what Rich said as far as thanking Dawn and her staff and, and all of our emergency services, especially our police, because they are truly on the front lines. And they can't stop their business. They have to maintain business as normal. So, big shout out to them. As far as all the committees I'm on, open space, recreation, municipal alliance, environmental, everything is pretty much on hold. As I mentioned, last meeting, OEM has done a great job obtaining necessary items that we need for our police, fire and ambulance. The only thing that I've heard lately regarding recreation is I got an email today from the county that the county farm and horse show has made a decision today that they are not going to have a queen of the fair pageant. So I don't know how that's going to affect our local municipal con. That decision will be made by the recreation department or the Warriors football program who actually sponsor it. And again, I don't know what, what decision locally is going to be made. I just heard that today from the county. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Ryan?
I really don't have a lot. Coming down from Sussex County MUA, the shred event on May 15th has been canceled. And the e-waste event on May 16th has been canceled up there. But they are still open for recyclables and other waste products up in Sussex County, up in Lafayette. That's all I got.
Jennifer, you're up.
Yep, so I emailed our D. Benedetto from the superintendent for the schools. Schools are closed until May 15th. He did post a video on the school district Facebook about the reentry plans. As of right now, the Hudson-Maxon deal is still alive. I did want to speak about some other things. I wanted to know why we're, we have ordinances and resolutions on our, on our meetings that are not absolutely required during a pandemic. I'd also like to request that we move meetings back to the evenings. My husband has returned back to work, thank God, but I am homeschooling my children full time, working full time. I think it would also be really helpful due to the essential workers that we have in town. Zoom allows us the possibility of more residents to attend council meetings. And I think we should really take advantage of that. I also would like to, I understand we're going into executive session, but I would like to table the executive session because I did not receive the contract until this morning and had not had time to review it at all. And that's it.
Thank you. I think we, I entertain a motion to open to the public.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, and we comment is five minutes or less and welcome public.
Hey, Mike?
Yes?
Mike, Ryan just sort of got cut off when he was saying, but we skipped over the administrator's report. Do we want to do that first?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Let's have the administrative report. I'm reading too fast.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
That would have been easy, Ron, a real quick one.
So I'm feeling pretty good there for a minute. Yeah, I got a couple of things I want to talk about. Let's talk about the hard, you know, we are, the department heads, myself and Lorraine are working almost 24/7 on looking how to maintain all the expenditures, everything, trying to keep things to a relevant absolute have to do. There's some things that's popped up this week that we're getting our arms around that were, just happened to come up. But one of the things that I got approved was a furlough process through the civil service commission. And able to get the 30-day notice that's required on furlough programs eliminated. So that that particular process is a tool in our toolbox now, should we want to implement that throughout the, the borough. Right now, I'm looking, I'm getting the department heads, myself and Lorraine are looking at what absolute functions are being conducted, what the alternate work schedules look like. And if those work schedules we're thinking are going to be in place for a while, we would suggest that we implement this furlough program that would not, would take them off the rolls during those off days that they're doing. We do have four essential personnel that are working from home. They have laptops when they're off the schedule to keep us down in headcount for the separation issues. They are working from home. So as we see those areas that are working 50% of the time, but the people are just staying at home, we would recommend that we put them on a furlough as soon as possible. And I will be giving you information on that any day now. Furlough, let me explain the furlough program a little bit. It's in lieu of a layoff. This is kind of the middle road before you go through a formal layoff process with the civil service. Not many municipalities or counties use this. And quite frankly, we're in new ground. Furloughes are not used a whole lot because most people, when they've made the economic decisions or have had economic impacts, they're ultimately in a layoff process. So we don't know how long this is going to impact our agency. We don't. We don't know if it's the next 30 days, 60 days or 90 days. But this furlough process allows us, a 30-day furlough process with the opportunity to extend it out 60 days. And we're applauded by the state by having the ability to alter schedule, that it won't be a total full week off for employees. It'll be some measurement of one day off, two days off, three days off, depending on how each one of those departments are working. So it gives us a lot of variability. It gives us the ability to make decisions. And it allows us to get a handle on this and a more systematic approach versus just having an overall layoff and conducting that in the borough. That being said, the other thing that we've spent a lot of time on this week with my DPW supervisors is the reopening of the cycling, recycling center. Right now, what we're proposing to do through June 1st is have a recycling pickup schedule, just like we do with leads. I'll have two, my DPW staff will be fully staffed starting Monday. We'll have all hands on deck on Monday. There will be no more alternating shifts. We've segregated the meeting rooms, I mean, the break rooms, they can't be in the break room at the same time. We've altered the schedule so nobody can be and break the social distancing rules that we put in place. But I'm going to take two of our laborers and they're going to go. And just as we do with lead pickup, we will have recycling pickup as well. And when I say recycling, this is not the general recycling that, that Roselli picks up on a weekly basis. This is the things that people would normally take to the recycling, brush and metal and those types of things. We've asked that we keep it down to nothing more than six inches in diameter. And we'll have our chipper there. If it's, if it's a lot of it in their, in their yard, we'll chip it at the spot. We've asked people to bring the debris to the, to the front of the lot. We're not going to go on anybody's property. We don't want to interact with any of the public. That's why we're doing this, instead of trying to reopen this recycling center right now and breaking that social distancing that we're afraid that's going to happen if a lot of people show up at that site. The DPW guys have put together also the ability, and I need to talk to the finance committee about this, but we, we can purchase long bags through the recycling grant, have those available to sell to the public if they want to do that. I know there's some concern about people having to go to Home Depot, having to go to Lowe's or wherever to get these large garbage bags. We can do, we can handle this, just like we're doing Bolt stickers right now. People can call and tell us how many bags they need. They can pay us for those bags. We can put a name on their label and they can pick them up at DPW. That's what they want to do. They won't have to go to the Home Depot or the Lowe's or anywhere to go get that. We are looking also at what the potential world will look like when we get back to business. And we are, we've designed Plexiglas enhancements for both tax assessment and the building departments areas. Steve and his guys will be building those over the next day or two, so that we'll have segregation there in those offices. We're looking at the plans of what everybody else around us has been doing about limiting the number of people, limiting the sanitary requirements of pack transfer of documents, all of those things that will keep our people safe and the public safe when we get to that point. This is, this, I can't say it enough, this has been much more of a working process than I have ever seen. We, we look at something new almost every day to see what's the safest way to get this thing back to normal as, as normal will be as we know it. So with that, boss, that's about all I got. I could talk all day. We're doing a lot around here, but that's the top three that I thought we should, we be put on the table today.
Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion open to the public.
So may.
Second, all in favor? So welcome public. You have five minutes or less. Welcome.
I would, I would ask the public, for those people that would like to ask the question of the council, to go to your resource button, hit the resource button and, and press the hand key. And we can pick by those hand keys that we have.
Not hearing any.
I'll make a motion close to public.
Second. Hold on, I see a hand. I see it. I see that hand. Yep.
Okay, hi, I'm from Holland, 29 Rollins Trail. My question is, I just want to get some clarification about the, the bags themselves. They're like the, the big waste management bags or the, what kind of bag? And, and it's through the grant for recycling? How's that work?
We, we can buy materials for recycling and those types of things that helps us with collection and those types of things. These are just going to be general large, long bags, almost like a garage bag. Because we know people have tough time handling those things. So that's the, that's the area that we're looked at. We just want to make it easier for the public to be able to purchase those and not have to go to any of the large stores to get them if they, if they want to. It's an option. That's all.
Right, right. Okay, so they would, the, the town would use the grant money, purchase these in bulk. And then we call up town council, we, we call town hall and, and purchase them through you guys.
Yeah, right now, we're looking, we're thinking the cost is going to be like five, $3 for five bags. So you call up and tell us how many bags you want. You pay us the cash like you do our Bolt stickers. My DPW puts your, puts them in a bag, puts a, put your name on them. You go by the DPW shop, pick them up, and you're off to the races.
Right, great. Thank you for clarification.
You're welcome.
Heather Fury, Windsor Avenue. I want to know who authorized the use of the wellness center for our private.
John, you want that?
I didn't hear the question. To, to my knowledge.
John Ursin, go ahead. You can respond to that.
Yeah, Mayor. It, it's my understanding that the community center has not hosted any private functions. And we do have some confidentiality concerns about talking specifically about what services are provided individually at the community service, at the community center. So if it's, if there's a question about something specific, but to my knowledge, no one has told me that there's been a private function at the community center yet.
Yeah, that, so you're telling me that no one was in the building that wasn't a wellness center employee or volunteer of some sort? Because right now, the building is supposed to be closed. It's a municipal building.
Or someone who is receiving services.
To a closed building?
The building can be open to people who are receiving services.
Services that are non-essential.
Well, that's, you know, that's, you're saying that. No one else is saying that.
Hello?
What?
Hello?
Hello?
Was?
Ron, who's up?
Can you clarify what essential means?
I, I'm not going to go into a dictionary definition of essential, but people at the community center make decisions about what type of services are needed to people in various circumstances.
But a baby shower, a baby shower is not essential.
We're not going to talk about specific services that were given to individuals in need at the community center.
Okay, what is the, the cost to hold a private event there? Is there rental fees? Is there insurance that's needed?
We have not authorized private events at the community center. Any community center activities were provided as a service through the community center.
Okay, I would like to hold a birthday party there. Am I allowed to hold a birthday party?
You can apply to the council because it's government property. But I can tell you with almost certainty that private functions would not be allowed during the pandemic time.
Such as a baby shower?
There was no baby shower. Mike, do you want to take this? Since you authorized me?
No, and, and.
Yeah, Mayor, Dawn, Councilwoman Roberts, that, I don't, I want to be careful about not talking about individual services that you provide to residents through the community center or in the community center. If someone else has a misperception about it, that frankly is their problem. And it's not going to interfere with the confidentiality that we're going to maintain with respect to services that we have provided to residents.
I agree with John. Thank you.
Where can we obtain a list for these services that are allowed to be provided?
The services that are allowed to be provided are the services that are determined to be needed by the people running the community center. And I would sincerely guess that during the pandemic, those lists of services have probably changed and probably change on a daily basis.
True.
When you post something on a public page or you make something public, it no longer becomes confidential information. So.
That isn't even close to true.
Hold on. There's a concern there. Okay? The other part is, number one, Heather keeps getting muted. All right? That, that, that's part of a big problem that's going on. She's continually being muted. All right? She didn't get her five minutes, continually getting muted. We have stopped giving out marriage licenses. All right? If that's deemed non-essential, that a marriage license is not essential for a first responder who, it works for the sheriff's office, who wants to get married because if he gets sick, his fiancee cannot do anything to help him and make any medical decisions. If that's not deemed essential, that is non-essential. Then any kind of event, like the one held in the community center on Sunday, is non-essential. It's a non-essential building. It was closed. Dawn is doing her best to sanitize things and keep people out of there, delivering things, getting them delivered. Why is it okay for one, but not the other? And I think that that's where the questions are coming from.
So again, to repeat my advice, just because someone posted a picture of an event doesn't mean that people have waived confidentiality with respect to their particular situation or the services provided. That's an enormous leap that has no basis. And with respect, and with respect to the marriage licenses, the marriage licenses, Valerie can answer this, but it's my understanding that there's a process in place to issue them either online or virtually.
Well, now there is. There's not. It's, you cannot do that. It has to be done in person. I have started doing that again. The only thing I have asked is to people, if it's, to please wait a couple of weeks. I have asked everyone who has called to please wait a couple of weeks. I did two marriage licenses last Thursday. One was for a K-1 visa that was going to expire in the end of May. Another one was for someone who was losing their insurance, who had actually, they should have lost their insurance the end of April, but it's been extended. But I did it for them as well. That's all I've asked, is for people to wait a couple of weeks to see where we are. I live with two very compromised people. I also have a daughter who's staying with me right now, who is working in a nursing home. I don't want to pass anything to anybody, and I don't want anyone to pass anything to me. So I've only asked to wait two weeks. That's it. I didn't say I wouldn't do them. I asked people to wait two weeks. And, and by the way, the advice that was given by the state was that if your building is closed, you are not doing marriage licenses. It was only because the registrars had reached out to the state and said, we, some, some agencies would like to do them if it's an emergency situation. And that's what's being done. And the person who you're speaking about has been married. They got married. They got their license and they got married. I, I know they got married. My thing is, is that he was an emergency responder working for the sheriff's office. It was an emergency, and that was the stipulation by which I was informed that that was one of the things that it fell under. It needed to be an emergency. And for him, that was an emergency. And what I had said was, if it's a K-1 visa situation or someone is very sick, very ill, and they may die, I will do it. He had told me that he had been with people who had died. One of his coworkers died from this, this, from COVID-19. I could not put myself in that situation. I asked to please wait two weeks. That's all I asked. They had a wedding that was already scheduled that they had to cancel. So they weren't even ready to come in and see me for their regularly scheduled wedding. If they weren't ready to get married until the summer, or whatever it was, May, June, then waiting two weeks should not have been that much of a hardship. Right, so waiting, again, like I'm saying, is waiting until the end of this. I didn't say waiting until the end of this. I said, I asked them to please wait for two weeks. I'm not referring, hold on, and let me finish my sentence. Waiting until the end of this, or waiting for two weeks for a marriage license, or until the executive orders are lifted, that's okay with the municipal building and you, but it's not okay in the community center. That's what I'm hearing. That's the point of what I'm hearing.
I don't think that's what you're hearing at all. What you're hearing is that services are being provided through the community center. You saw a picture and you would like somebody to tell you the details of the services provided. That is inappropriate.
I already know the services that were provided, because as soon as I found out about it, I picked up the phone and I called the mayor. And the mayor told me what the services were.
Okay, so if, if you don't like the way the community center is being run, or you want to put different rules or parameters.
That's not what I said, John. Don't put words in my mouth. I did not say that, even a little bit. What I said was, is that there, there are executive orders closing municipal buildings. You had somebody who was in the building. It doesn't matter who it was, throwing them a shower 10 minutes, three hours, six hours, it doesn't matter. So what you're saying to the community is, is that if, if you have another person in town, you have thousands of other unwed mothers in town who need services like this. They would love to receive gifts and be invited into the community center for a little party. So is Dawn going to do that for every single other unwed mom who needs a donation?
Let me, let me, let me jump in here, please. That, that's enough. I made a decision that I take full responsibility for, not Dawn, not anybody else, knowing the intimate details of it, which I will not share because obviously pepper laws and all that kind of stuff. Three people came to pick up some gifts that were dropped off from and did, and did a virtual thank you. I don't know, I want to go into much detail, but it was not as it's depicted at all. And so I would do the same thing for anyone under them particular circumstances. And so if, if people are painting this, oh, well, they had it, went there and had a power, had a, had a party. Not true. That's simply not true and very inaccurate. I will not go into details of this person's individual problems because they're private and they're still probably under, they're, they're not resolved yet. But we have been doing something that I think was the right thing to do. And so I take responsibility for it. I, I checked my authority to do that, and I'm within my authority to do that. And if I had to do it again under the same circumstances, I would. So let me be clear with that. This was not a party. Whole bunch of people didn't show up celebrating any of that. So stop that nonsense. Simply not true. I have some discretion to make decisions. I take responsibility for the decision. If people didn't like it, I'm sorry, but, but. If people didn't like it, I'm sorry, but, but, but that's, that's how I deal, that's how I deal with it on an individual basis. And because we do it on, and under certain circumstances, I have to make a judgment call. And so if no one likes that judgment, I'm sorry. But I take full responsibility for that. Enough already with, with, with all that, you know? It's false. The buck stops here. I'm not afraid to make decisions. I will make decisions based on the, the knowledge I have. The more knowledge I have, the better I like it. But until then, within my authority, I'll make decisions. This decision was fully in my authority, according to all the executive orders and whatnot. Do I, do I have purpose judgment? No, I'm a human being like everybody else. But I do the best I can, what I have, and I make a decision based on people and the people's needs at that moment. So I just want to be, just, just enough already with this.
Hello? Hello?
I feel that it should have been done at the borough hall, at town hall, and not at a private location like this.
Um, am I on? Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Hi, I am Christopher Vincent, 33 Toby Hannah Trail. And just seeing the reaction to the mayor and this community center, whatever happened, it doesn't matter. There are people getting sick in our town. Now, you are letting residents into that community center and you are giving food away. My father is 63 years old. And now I don't know if this food we got has been touched by another resident. There should be no person in there except for a community center employee or volunteer. And honestly, I think it's disgusting how you mute people when they try to have a voice. Heather did not get her five minutes, and I think it's horrible. And I just want people to know, I got on at 1:35, so if this gets muted, we'll know why. I think it's disgusting. That's my first thing. My second thing is, I would like to know where the $1,300 went, that was supposed to be advertised for the community center, that is now going to recreation.
Rain.
Yeah, would you like me to answer that?
Please do.
Okay, we have a, a trust set up. It's called Celebration. Under that is a sub-account for the Resource Center. It's not $1,300. It's more than that, but that is in trust for the Resource Center.
And that could only be touched by the Resource Center, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. My third question is, I would like to know if they are going to end up doing a full clean for the community center that we will be able to take resources or have resources without worrying about if this resident was affected or not.
Community center is cleaned and disinfected daily.
Okay, but I'm saying is, are we going to be safe accepting resources now that there were multiple residents in the community center?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Hello? Hello?
Go ahead.
Yep, hello?
Who is this? Name and address?
It's Marimodes. I'm a resident of Hapakong. As far as the community center, I have one comment, and that was that nobody, no one was wearing masks and they were within six feet of each other. After passage of the bill list, can they be posted on the internet?
They are. They're posted as, as part of the resolutions. I post all of the resolutions after the meetings. And they can be found at, on the general code website. There is a link from the Hapakong website to the general code website, but all of the resolutions are on there that were adopted at any given meeting. And the bill list resolution will have all of the full bill list behind it.
Why can't they be attached to the, the minutes of the meeting where people can find them?
It's just, I, I just haven't, I, I don't put the full packet. I mean, I can do that if, if, if that's what people want, but I do, I do list the resolutions separately so they can be found easier by number.
Okay. At the April 50th video meeting agenda, why were the restrictions on short-term rentals 2020-72 listed under resolutions?
John, you want to take that?
Yes, yes, Mayor. The, the, there was an executive order from the Office of Emergency Management that allowed municipalities to regulate short-term rentals. So in response to that, the Borough passed a resolution authorizing some regulation of the short-term rentals. Subsequent to that, only recently, the Office of Emergency Management has come out and in some ways pulled back on that authorization to some degree, requiring that if people are in short-term rentals, that there had to be inquiries made about whether they were healthcare workers and about their alternate living arrangements and so forth, making it very difficult to enforce the regulations on short-term rentals. The decision was made to suggest to the council that we go back to pursuing the ordinance that had previously been introduced, which allows a completely pandemic agnostic approach to short-term rentals. It's a, it's an approach that was proposed six months ago. It really has no direct motivation from the pandemic and allows the municipality to license short-term rentals so that zoning and the other various departments can keep track of where their short-term rentals, ensure that the short-term rentals have proper facilities to operate as short-term rentals, and to then follow up and enforce if there's any problems. So the, the ordinance that's on today is the general resolution to license short-term rentals, not anything pandemic specific.
Okay, so this was a temporary thing and it was as a resolution, not as an ordinance?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
You just said correct.
Well, I couldn't hear him, or I wouldn't have said that.
For public? I don't hear any more public?
Motion to close the public, Mayor.
Hold up, Michael. Mike, hold up. We got, one has got the hands up here. Hold on. Okay.
Can you hear me?
iPhone is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Corinne, this is Corinne Booster. I'm, I'm sorry, I cannot share my address due to harassment by people on this page, so I don't feel safe disclosing that. Is that acceptable?
Correct.
Yes.
So I feel like I need to speak, and I'm not trying to beat a dead horse at this point, but so many inaccurate things have been said. I was one of the people at the Wellness Center on Sunday that everyone is attacking. As far as not wearing masks, if you look at the video, that was also stolen off of my private page, you will see that we did enter with masks on. The people that were there in total were for myself, my daughter, and my other daughter, and Dawn Roberts, who also is my daughter's private caregiver at this time, so she has been with our family on a weekly basis, taking my daughter's vital signs. The attacks that have come from current council members, a woman that has run for council twice unsuccessfully, blasted on town pages, blasted on personal pages, showing my daughter's private picture, taken off my private wall. I don't care what you say about there being an assumption of things being made public when you put it on Facebook. It was a private page that you took and shared. How dare you, without having the facts? And that seems to be a trend that's happening in this town, is people will take a little bit of information. And with their political agenda, they skew that information and get a following of blind, uncommunity members. And I feel sorry for this town. If you are that weak that you can follow these people blindly, without investigating the facts for yourself. There was not a party. There was not an event. We didn't go licking the cans of food, Christopher Vincent, so don't worry about it being contaminated. And I can't figure that part out either because all you do is complain about the Wellness Center. So why would your father be there in the first place? Enough is enough. We are in a pandemic. People are dying. People are in crisis. And if this is how you're choosing to spend your time, shame on all of you. To the council, to Councilwoman Dawn Roberts, to Mayor Mike Francis, you have our sincere thanks and our respect and our appreciation for stepping up in a time of need that none of you have any idea about. You don't know the circumstances. You don't know what's going on. Jen Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
For years.
Yep.
And here you are as someone that was a mental health specialist for my family, knowingly taking this picture that was given to you off of a private page because you and I are not friends.
Corinne. I told you exactly.
She's on her five minutes.
I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry, you're right.
Taking a private picture of my daughter, who you know. Did you ask for the facts about it from me, or did you take it and give it to Heather and have it spread as malicious lies?
Corinne, I told you yesterday when you texted me exactly what happened. As soon as I found out, I was alerted, I found out, I picked up the phone and I called the mayor. And I asked Mike, you have a problem. And his response to me was, not only should the event, and it's not about the event, Corinne, it has nothing to do.
It wasn't an event, so I would appreciate.
Hold on, hold on. It has nothing to do with you. It has nothing to do with your children or your child. It has nothing to do with that.
Then why is my daughter's picture out there?
Hold on. I did nothing. I called, I picked up the phone and I called the mayor. That is what I did. That is the extent of what I did, okay? What happened after I did that, I have no control over, just like you have no control over your daughter going on Facebook and commenting on the Facebook page, the, the posts that I've seen. Just like, nobody has control over anybody else. So what happened after that has nothing to do with me. Nothing at all, okay? This, this issue that the people are having, that I had and expressed to Mike, was not about the event. It was not about somebody going in and receiving donations. It was the fact that this is a municipally-owned building that is under executive order to close by the governor. And our mayor, and who just took all responsibility, and councilperson opened the building for somebody who is her friend. So it looks now like the government is doing a personal favor for one of their friends on taxpayer money. That is the issue. That's the issue that I had that I expressed to Mike. That is the issue that anybody who has spoken to me about it, that I have said. That is it. I don't care who it was, because let me tell you, if it was me who opened that building, you guys would be ripping me from limb to limb. You would be bashing me. You would be calling for my resignation. So let's not pretend that this has anything to do other than the fact that this should not have been done. That's all.
How did you get the picture of my daughter?
I am not at liberty, I didn't, what picture?
All right, let's.
There is no picture. I picked up the phone and spoke to Mike.
Let's continue on.
Hi, Mike, I got a public coming on.
Hello?
I didn't get to finish my last, hello, it's Marimodes. I didn't get to finish my last question.
Okay.
So I was, I was wondering if I could do that. At a pre, because it kind of sounded like things were going on in the background and I couldn't understand what was going on. At a previous meeting, Councilman Hoffrich asked about financial assistance for Councilwoman Dawn Roberts. I was wondering how much the financial assistance was, and what was it for?
What?
We ask him. The financial assistance, it wasn't for me. It was for residents. We have people that gave private monetary donations. I handed them over to Lorraine. And this way, if someone needs something, like for diabetic supplies or glucerna, we can give them a gift card, which they sign out. I record the serial number, the date that they're signing it out. The, the amount is the same for everyone across the board that needs it. And that's all through donations that have come in since COVID.
Well, I don't know why that wasn't explained and it was done at the end of a meeting under, after new business and everything was done. And as far as the, now that we have new information about the Community Wellness Center, I would like to say that if you're all friends and you're her caregiver, you should have done it in her house.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Next up.
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. This is Lynn Ritchie, 110 Staten Trail, and my question is really for Ron. What are the other municipalities around us doing with their employees during this pandemic shutdown? Has everyone maintained status quo, or are they all pursuing this furlough program? Or have they already started initiating layoffs?
Oh, Linda, it's all the above. Everybody's kind of doing a little bit of all of it. And it depends whether or not the municipality or township is under the criteria of civil service or not. That's the first thing you have to consider. Not all boroughs are in civil service. So they have a little bit more liberties to have layoff plans immediately than we do in civil service. The county has done a 50% on and off, keeping people on as things go. There's, really, there's just a whole mixed bag of it right now. There's not one shoe that's fitting all throughout the county.
Okay. So you're anticipating if this is going to continue, we're going to have to implement this furlough program. I imagine now you've cut back hours or due to the fact that we're civil employees or civil servants, we cannot cut hours or do anything according to the contracts?
No, not, not, not that at all. That's why I wrote the furlough process and that's why I submitted it to civil service. And I was able to get the 30-day advertisement relieved through civil service that gave it to us that we could start this as soon as we want to.
Okay. All right. Thanks so much. I hope everyone stays well. And, you know, regarding this craziness that's going on in the town, I'm just going to state one, my personal opinion, and basically, had it have been Jennifer Johnson who had done any infraction of anything regarding anything dealing with the town of Hapakong, she would have been ripped limb to limb. And I just think right now is the time that maybe it's a united council and everybody stops it with this nitpicking, I hate you, I hate you, I hate you. And we all start maybe having a unified council and maybe there won't be so much dissension amongst your constituents. But that's just my opinion.
I'd like to know who told you we don't have a unified council, because it's no secret at all that, that, I take that personal, by the way. I will.
I take it personal that I, when I go to council meetings.
Yeah, right. Well, I'll go to the wall for any of my council members under any circumstance, because I believe we have a good, diverse council. We might have differences of opinion, but I respect everybody's opinion. And I bring issues to the council and trust our council to make the right decision. So that's where we go with that. So, so if anybody attacks Ryan Smith, I will, I will go to the wall, defend him because I trust him. Same thing with Jennifer. We might have different opinions, but I respect her thoughts and, and, and pay a lot of attention to it also. So no, don't, don't, don't start any, any nonsense at all about a council that's not united. Our council is united, and if we have problems, we will discuss them problems and resolve them. And we, when we go public, we're going to be a united council. So I can assure you of that.
Mike, as I stated, it's my opinion from personal observations, and I won't talk about it anymore until this is over.
Thank you for your opinion.
Thank you.
All right, Mike, we have another one coming up.
Come on. Come on.
You're on, Eric. All right. One more here, Mike, let's see. Got a full screen here.
Patty has her hand up.
Okay, where we at?
Uh probably to your second page, Patty.
Patty Poland. Yep, I just unmuted myself there.
There we go.
Uh Patricia Poland, once again, 29 Rollins Trail. And Mr. Mayor, my only thing, listen, if you guys are all unified, I'm totally for it. I think everybody is. I think it's a great statement. I see that this is being recorded. You may want to go back and watch everyone else's faces when another council member speaks, including not just the people of the town. Because let me tell you, if you guys could read lips and expressions, I, I hope that mine came through a couple of times. Second, um, that includes some of the town employees that with, with the eye rolling and the dirty look. So you're saying unified and I, listen, if you're all for the, the right things, I am totally on board with that. But go back, watch this recording and check out some of the, the faces that your council members are making. That people in the audience have no choice but to see. Uh you know, you guys aren't sitting up on your, your, in, in the, in the courtroom up there where we don't get to see your faces. So yeah, just take five seconds and go back and, and look at the eye rolling and the dirty looks. Okay? Thank you.
Next up.
Uh, hold on. Hello, you're on. Okay.
Who? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is it me?
Oh, there you go.
It's the first time I did this, so. Is it, can you see me? Can I see you?
Yeah, you're on. There you go.
All right. Well, Patricia, I heard her, Mara, Jen, Dawn and Christopher Ryan. All right. Christopher Ryan, I heard a lot about. However, you know, I asked him to call me a couple of times, he didn't do it. Uh, having said that. Christopher is owed some money or something like that. That's not a big deal, Christopher. You're talking about a hundred dollars. Someone's going to take care of you. I just think that everybody that's up there, I know that you guys don't know me, uh, at least 50% of the people here don't know me or ever heard of me. Uh, however, yes, hello. Um, you guys work so hard. I always have to say that. Okay? Jen did something, uh, hold on, let me make, oh, I'm sorry, not Jen. Dawn Roberts did something. Uh, I'm writing everything down, but I've been watching this for a couple of days. And you guys know that I'm a business partner of hers. But you know, I have to say, Dawn Roberts, I would never say she did anything wrong. All she did is try to help things and she guided things. And I'd have to say that to Jen. And she guided things to have social businesses. And then I don't understand why so many people from Mara, Patricia, and you guys all bumped into me. I'm just saying it like it is. I usually don't follow the law. Everybody knows that, including John Harrison. Uh, so having said that, uh, I'm not sure why you're giving everybody a hard time. This, we have so many things. My wife is there. She, she sits there at Valley Hospital in, um, uh, Ridgewood, New Jersey. She's saving people every day. And you guys are trying to find something at the senior centers that someone did wrong. Why don't you go out and do some real work? Uh, and I'm not disrespecting you in any, any, uh, way. But I could tell you, if you've got extra time to be filming things, taking pictures, going through Facebook, I could get you positions. Volunteer, but you still get paid at Valley Hospital, at Hackett's Medical Center. I can't do it up here. But, uh, I'm just telling you, I, I don't really understand why everybody got a problem with the council. Mind you, I don't know half the council, but I looked at every single thing they did. I've been looking at it for 17 years. And I'm just like, everybody in this town compared to Jefferson, Roxbury, which everybody knows I'm at. And I, I, I grew up in Jefferson. And you know, I don't want to say anything about Mike or Ryan or, uh, Schindler. Uh, his first name is Rich. Nobody's been nothing but nice, but I always say, some people say a lot of things. I know it's politics, but deep down inside, I don't talk about politics. They care about people. I just want to let you know that. I went to Ron one day, he cares. You want to know why? Because I had an issue with something and he said, you know what? Don't worry about the issue. I'll take care of it myself. Nobody does that. I've been in a lot of towns from Cliffside Park all the way up. And I truly believe the town that we live in has been most helpful for me. Why do you think I'm in Roxbury? I was successful here. Some businesses aren't. I mean, people help us on both sides. And, uh, I'm not sure why we always have this issue. You guys know, I have four kids in the process here. All the way. And two of them graduated from college already, right here from Hapakon. They did great. So what I want to tell you is, and, uh, you know, I don't know a whole bunch of kids. I don't know why this little youngster is on the even video. We should cut him off, Mike. Uh, but anyway, what, uh, you know, I have to say is that, you know, I love this town. Why can't we just work together, guys? Come on. Why can't we do that? I mean, I see all your faces. You know, this is the first time I've been on video. And I'm not afraid to speak. I've been around for a little while here. And I'm not sticking up for anybody. I'm not sticking up for John or anybody. I don't even know, uh, the administrator is Ron Tappan. All right, I gotta keep on like thinking to myself, but come on, guys, you're all nice people. Nobody wants anybody to die. Dawn Roberts didn't do that to fucking infect the goddamn society. Give me a break. She was trying to help somebody. Don't go at her for that. Come on. She's nothing but a nice person. If you could do something that's nice and it kinda doesn't go with what you're feeling, then let it go. Come on. We got bigger things to handle. We got a lot of people that, and you don't even know what the second wave is. Half my family are doctors. So I'm not, I'm a doctor of hot dogs. So having said that, I just want to let you know that all of you guys are beautiful people.
Oh wait, he's dealing with it.
Five minutes is up.
Left my five minutes because people are going to get mad at me that I'm over this.
Thank you.
You don't really know these guys inside. Some of these guys on this screen I'm pointing to or girl, I'm sorry, not guys. Uh, guys, girls, I'm not really good with language, but great people. I know that you have political problems and all that, but god damn it, all these guys are great people. People on both sides that don't like each other always help me. Come on, guys.
Thank you, Ron. Your time's up.
Thank you, Mrs. Patty.
Thank you. Where we at, Ron?
Patty has her hand up. Can you unmute yourself, Patty?
I can, yes. Again, Patricia Poland, 29 Rollins. Um, no, I appreciate the, the fact that I was brought into that. I was just merely stating, um, my observations. Second, this youngster that is on the meeting, um, I personally know this youngster. And he is doing something here for Boy Scouts. If anyone is unaware of some of the things Boy Scouts need to do, check out the programs and you'd know that he's here for Boy Scouts. Second of all, um, he is a resident of our town and he's allowed to be here, so.
Thank you, Patty.
No problem.
I have to remind everybody that, uh, when you get done speaking, uh, you generally don't do it again, but that's all right. Next up, Ron.
I don't see anybody.
God, everyone got their five minutes, by the way.
Okay, Mike.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to close to this public.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, public. I, I hope everybody can appreciate this virtual Zoom thing. I, I, I think actually it's almost better than a regular meeting, uh, but we're still getting used to it. And hopefully we can. Well, maybe we can keep getting better at this. I, I think the world as we know it is changing. And maybe somebody changes with us, just saying. But now we're at ordinances, introduction ordinance, nine, 2020, short-term rentals. Ordinance adopting amendment to chapter 57, affordable housing, article two, municipal housing liaison. Chapter 152, hotel and motel occupancy tax, section five definitions, chapter 242 zoning, section five terms defined. And article four, general regulations, adopting short-term rentals and adopting chapter 189, short-term rentals in the code of the Burva Pakon. Boy, that was a mouthful. So this is the introduction of an ordinance.
I'll move it. I'll move it, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Did we do a roll call on this?
No, we don't. Just all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, so move.
Opposed. Using an ordinance during a pandemic, but go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so, um, it'll be on our next meeting, Valerie, which is?
Um, our next meeting is the sixth of May. Uh, this will not be on that because we need, there's a seven and 10 day rule. So you have to have 10 days in between introduction and adoption. And I also have to advertise this. And there needs, it needs to be advertised at least seven days before the, when it's adopted. So either.
What date, will that, what date will that bring us to?
Um, not a hundred percent sure. I, I have to, I don't know exactly when it will be published. I have to send that to the newspaper this afternoon. They usually get it in within a couple of days. So, um, it's, it has, like I said, has to be at least 10 days in between introduction and adoption. And I don't know exactly when it will be posted in the newspaper. So we'll just have to wait to see when.
Mayor, this is John Er- for the, Mayor, for the purposes of announcing the public hearing, why don't we announce the public hearing as May 20th? This way we can keep it on an agenda. If it turns out that we have publication or input problems between now and then, we'll have it on the agenda. We can carry it to another day. Does that work, Valerie?
May 20th. Yes.
May 20th, okay. I, I'd just like to give people a sense of when we're going to have the final hearing on that so they can plan on it. And that we wouldn't have to worry about someone didn't see the advertisement. So this will be the announced final hearing on that ordinance. All right, final hearing. Ordinance five, 2020, amendment 24263, an ordinance of the Burva Pakon, County of Sussex replacing section 242 of the code of the Burva Pakon regarding restoration of structures. This ordinance was requested by the land use board to clarify some gray areas.
I'll move it. Second.
Uh, open it to the public, right, Valerie?
Yes.
Okay, any question to comment?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What does this actually do, this ordinance?
It clarifies when someone, like if a house falls down or would make it take it down, when you replace it, it clarifies the criteria for what you can do before you need a variance. Uh, the existing ordinance is not clear.
So it, but it takes out the destruction portion of the ordinance that's in the code book, correct?
I don't know what it takes out, but this is the recommendation of the land use board. Because when people come, when they, when they're reconstructing a house, uh, the current ordinance is not as clear as this one is.
Well, the, have you read both of them? Because the only thing that's the difference between the ordinance in the code book and this ordinance is that there's the last, uh, section of it is missing.
Yeah, where were that? And that would probably would have been the problem was.
Right. So A, B, C, and now D is missing, which talks about the percentage of destruction. So you're taking that piece out of the ordinance.
Correct.
Um, I also, uh, just for discussion, asked Ron for a copy of the master plan. Uh, I haven't received it. Um, Ron told me to go look for the redevelopment plan, which is not what I requested because this ordinance is pertinent to the entire town, not just the redevelopment area. Um, I actually have a copy of the master plan from 1980. This is, uh, this is what it looks like. Um, I'd really like a copy of the master plan because they're referencing a master plan in here that I have no. I have no, um, access to. I, I haven't seen it.
Usually when there's a, a zoning issue, the land use board will study the problem, make a recommendation to council for changes. So that's where that comes from. And, uh, who knows better what to do with, with our ordinances than the land use board when it comes to property use? So that's kind of where that comes from. More, is there any more public questions on it?
Have a few, I Windsor Avenue. I want to know how you can vote on something without knowing what it is or being able to explain it. I understand the land board is tasked with putting this stuff together, but how council and elected official can you vote on something without actually knowing what it is that you're voting on?
Because we take the recommendation from the land use board. We're not, we are not the land use board. We, we take a look at the ordinance, understand the differences. And if you don't understand a difference, you don't like them.
You don't understand them. You're sitting there saying you don't understand them. You don't know what the differences are. You just answered that question. So how could you sit there and say that you're taking a recommendation and you're understanding it when you're not understanding? You just said that.
Any more questions?
This is pretty much just to clarify the restoration of a non-conforming lot. If a building is destructed, okay, or partially destructed, should I say, that they can go back and rebuild it and still be non-conforming. Okay? It's clarifying things in the old, um, land use book. And I think, uh, the attorney for the land use, uh, board went through this and the, uh, land use, uh, board itself. And I think this is a good recommendation to pass it.
Okay, Mike, don't see any.
All right.
Move, bring it back.
Paul Clomner?
I think this needs a roll call, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Hoffrich Camp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Enviement, yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay. That's done. Resolutions, uh, I have copies of the other. We'll start with resolution 202077, resolution awarding the River Sticks Streetscape project to Zaccaro Incorporated. I believe everybody has a copy of that resolution.
We do. I'll move it.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoffrich Camp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution 202077.
Seventy-eight.
We just did that, I'm sorry. What are the other ones? We have, I got papers all over the place. Establish your grace period for property taxes and water and sewer payments due to the pandemic.
So moved.
Mr. Hoffrich Camp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Lorraine a question. Lorraine, you said something to me yesterday about June 2nd. Remember how you had said that this, we were talking about that? But if they pay by Ju- I just want to make sure that if they pay by June 1st, there's no interest. Or May, May 31st or June 1st?
Um, I think, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but I think that it was extending the grace period through June 1st.
Without penalties or interest.
No, 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 no. Wait, let's be clear, before June 1st.
No, it says by June 1st.
Yeah, it's, I believe it's June 1st.
It says the tax collector is authorized to accept the reference payments anytime before June 1st without penalties or interest. In the event that the payments are not paid by June 1st, any penalties and interest shall be retroactive to the payment due date. So I just want to make sure if it's June, May 31st or June 1st?
Go with May 31st.
May 31st, okay. That, my vote is yes, I just wanted clarification.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
I think that's all the, do we have any more? I think that's all the resolutions.
That's it.
That's it, okay. Old business. New business. And now we have, we're going to go to executive session. This is a new one, Ron, so, uh, we'll have to work with it. It's matter of the personnel and it's the chief of police contract.
Right. So I'd ask all the council people to go and get off this meeting and log into your other meeting that was sent out as executive session and we'll start that.
Okay. So, so, uh, look, it, it takes a, a, a motion to go into executive session. Uh, when the motion is made to executive session, because of the Zoom virtual format that we're in, I think we should inform the public that once we enter into closed session, which is going to happen by a different Zoom portal, uh, that the meeting will be adjourned from closed session with no further action taken.
Okay, so, so you want to finalize this meeting?
I'll make a motion to finalize it.
I'll make, right, I'll second that motion to move to a executive session on a separate Zoom channel. And we'll close this meeting.
Yeah, so before we do that, I'd like to make some comments because we're going to lose the public. First, the solar project. Hopefully we can start that within the next week or two, I'm told. It's going to be sooner than later, so I'm looking forward to that. That, that's a big deal. Uh, I've been notified by the governor's office that the Crescent Cove project that we got the grant for can move forward now. They weren't clear on that in the beginning, but now, uh, pretty much all the work on Lake of Paco that involved the, uh, the blue green algae can proceed, not just ours. This, we had a spill in Crescent Cove, it was a fuel oil spill. Our people responded, the county responded, the DEP was here. I didn't get the final report, but I, I've been told that they mitigated it. And so whatever was there didn't cause a, a whole lot of damage as far as I know. Regarding the ordinance for Airbnb and the resolution, uh, that's really a direct short-term rental, which is Airbnb, everybody will, will receive a letter. Every, the, every short-term rental that we know of will receive a letter letting them know what's going on with that and, uh, telling them that because of the emergency and our resolution, they have to cease and desist. Really support short-term rentals and our, our ordinance will, will clarify that and actually, actually make it easier because, uh, short-term rentals are allowed in, in every zone. Need a, a variance to have that. And our, our ordinance really described the, uh, the criteria for short-term rentals, uh, clearer than they are now. We, we have nothing now, but hopefully that will help that. Uh, I, I have a couple of volunteers that I thank sincerely. Alicia Sandage, Tapitha, I'm going to get her name wrong, Ted of, Ted of Vichy. They made masks, uh, for our, for our staff and also for our fire department. Tapitha and her kids made some great masks. Alicia made a bunch of masks for us that we got. And so everybody had at least one or two masks and I really appreciate that. Alicia's mask are the ones that you put the coffee filter in, very nice, well done. And we, we really appreciate that. Our, our people, our people are great. And, and the last thing I have to say has to do with our community. It does. I mean, uh, the strength of our community spirit will not be weakened or broken by, by dark-hearted individuals that use social media to spread any false accusations of conspiracy and outright lies to make themselves look important. These poor souls have lost sight of the good in all people and thrive on rumors and misinformation. Good will always overcome evil and faith will always prevail for those who believe. In today's world, words like network, community, and even friends no longer mean what they used to mean. The community is not something that happens on a blog or a Twitter. And a friend is more than someone whose online status you check. I, I read something recently by, by someone I, I greatly admire, John McCain. And here's what he said about situations like we're facing today. Do not despair of our present difficulties, but believe always in the promise and greatness of America because nothing is inevitable here. Americans never quit. We never surrender. We never hide from history. We make history. We will endure. And I so believe that in my heart and my soul. So everybody needs to know that we're all working on this together. And that includes every council member without exception. And we all commit to what we believe in. And so I just want people to know how heartfelt and thankful I am to have the people in our town that we have. That's everybody, with our, with our, with our differences, with everything. I think at the end of the day, well, we can all agree that we want what's best for our town. So thank you. And that's all I have to say and I'm sticking to it.
Okay, move to adjourn?
Second.
And go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye, everybody.